All right, I'd like to call to order the February 18, 2020 meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Stephen Mans, Tom McLeod.
Here.
Peter Pivko.
Present.
Deborah Ring.
Here.
Andre Sparadello.
Present.
Mark Pateman.
Here.
Christopher Chase.
Here.
Scott Holtz.
Here.
Next order of business is approval of the December 17, 2019 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for motion to approve.
So movement, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, it passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is a report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Good evening, Chair and planning board members. So update from since we didn't meet in January, from January and up to this point in February, what actions the City Commission have taken, in cases you heard. First City Commission meeting on December 30th, they were approved by 4-0 vote, and you heard these at their November 19th commission, um, planning board meeting. Was the DMP tax amendment to allow for amendments to landscape, screed scape requirements and to clarify certain regulations that were introduced into the provisions, that was one of them. And the second one was Rosemary Square City Place sign regulations was to establish a new sign format. They wanted to get away from the Mediterranean style and give their applicants a little more variety as far as signage, and modify that and update the City Place Tower thing and to codify the South Tower signage standards for that one. The next one, the City Commission meeting on the January 13, 2020, all these were approved by 5-0 vote and Planning Board again heard these at the November 19 meeting. My site in Rosemary Square, which you remember was a 21-story tower with 325 residential units with a three-story podium, restaurants, retail and office and open space. And the last is on January 27, 2020, by 5-0 vote, and you heard this on September 17, 2019. Accessory structures, since you guys heard it's been around, it's been around and changed a lot. You basically heard it when we said to do, um, we did, um, I don't remember now, 50% of actually the, no, 25% of basically of the primary structure as opposed to the 75% that the code allows today. And then for actually shared, limited to 120 square feet. Well, at the continuings at commission meetings, we finally reached a consensus where the Westphal and Echo Lake neighborhood, we prohibited all accessory structures. They, that's what they wanted, so that's how it ended up, it's prohibited. And they are allowed by have shares at 120 square feet. And North Shore pulled out of it because the neighborhood association was not comfortable at the time with going ahead with it. So those provisions only apply today to Echo Lake and to Westphal neighborhoods. That concludes staff presentation. And then on behalf of the commissions, those who didn't make the breakfast on our Friday, gave you our, we love West Palm Beach volunteers and for grateful commission saying thank you. And from our staff, thank you for all the hard work and volunteering for the planning board.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? At this point, we will then move to ex parte communications declaration. And let me begin by declaring that I had a telephone conference last week with the applicant and his counsel on planning board case 1086C. I will base my decision in this case solely upon the evidence presented this evening. Does anyone else have anything to report? Let me start on this side.
I also need to declare on planning board case 1086C, I had a telephone conference call yesterday with the applicant and Harvey Oyer. However, any decision made here tonight will be based strictly on the presentations and evidence presented here this evening.
Thank you.
I also had an information session with Harvey Oyer and the applicant, but my decisions will be based on the information presented tonight.
Thank you.
I had a conference call with Harvey Oyer and the applicant to discuss the 1086C. My decisions will be based solely on the information provided tonight.
Thank you.
I received an email from Harvey Oyer's office but was not able to reply.
And likewise on case number 1086C, I had a phone conference yesterday with the applicant and Mr. Oyer, but any decisions that I, or deliberations that I would have today would be solely based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing.
All right, thank you. We now move to the public hearing portion of our meeting and the swearing in of speakers. Would anyone who plans to speak or offer testimony, please stand up and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? You may be seated, thank you. Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none, that will bring us down to planning board case number 1086C. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening. For the record, Joni Brinkman with Urban Design Killjoy Studios on behalf of the applicant Tricera. I want to make a couple of statements before I start the presentation. First, we've been working with staff very closely on this application for literally months. And I'll explain that a little bit about how the phasing is working. But we've been negotiating with conditions of approval over the past couple of days. And the staff has elected to include those conditions in their presentation that are not yet in your staff report, and we have agreed to all those conditions. So I just wanted to get that up front. And also, just as a matter of clarification, when we initially submitted the application, one of the parcels, the one that actually was, had the bridge and the old Penny Saver building on it, was under separate fee ownership. Tricera has since closed on that, and they are now fees simple owner of the entire property, so. Before you tonight, we have a major amendment to the Palm Beach Post development of significant impact. The request is to allow for construction of a 22, 2,220 square foot restaurant with drive-through, referred to in your staff report as restaurant shop slash coffee shop, including 650 square feet of outdoor dining located in the northeast portion of the site. The Palm Beach Post property has been around for many, many years. It's located at the southeast, southwest corner of Belvedere and Dixie Highway, and it's comprised of two separate parcels, one being west of the tracks with about 400 and, I think it's 425 parking spaces on that property, and the balance of the property being east of the FEC railroad tracks. What we're proposing and what has already partially been approved, as I mentioned, we have been working with staff for quite a few months. And in order to allow for the development and permits to start to move forward for the demolition of what is shown here is the bridge office and the two-story office building in kind of the flesh color in between the office and warehouse building. We processed a minor amendment through staff. In order to do that, we could not increase any intensity associated with the existing development to be processed administratively. So even though we can, we were actually demolishing 86,000 square feet of building as part of that process, we also restricted about 29,000 square feet in the warehouse building to be permitted as a grocer use. But the rest of the building was restricted to still be maintained as warehouse. And the office building was only allowed to utilize 100,100 square feet and the balance of that building also be restricted. That allowed that request to not increase any traffic. That request is in the approval process right now. We expect the approval letter any day, and permits are in for those uses. And what we're proposing now is shown on the other side of the screen. We are maintaining the office building. The surface parking lot beneath the bridge and office story building is being constructed, the parking deck and surface parking. And then the south building, what we call the warehouse building, will have the grocer use, retail uses, a fitness center, as well as office space. And as part of this request, those will be approved due to the increased intensity associated with those, as well as the main focus of this request being the construction of the office building in the northeast corner of this, I'm sorry, the restaurant building, in the northeast corner of the site. This is just the overall site plan layout. Access to Dixie Highway will remain the same in this configuration as it will to the lot in the west. We'll talk about that in a little bit. The main function and changes here again is the construction of the drive-through restaurant at the northeast corner of the site. 22 parking spaces are going to be provided. We are working with staff to also, as part of this application, the cross-access that currently exists to the south of building one and the north of building three, the warehouse building, actually allowed for access across the FEC railroad tracks. That will be closed as part of this request and a pedestrian bid, bridge provided. We think that will increase safety in the area and allow for the crossing to be closed across the FEC. It's a little bit hard to see here, but we're also proposing some public art. Ben Mandel will be speaking to the branding and the art aspects of the project here in a moment. In your staff report, your staff has assessed all the applicable standards that are, that apply to this project. We are not a planned development, we're not in the downtown, we're subject to these sections of the code, and staff has done an assessment and determined we are consistent with all these code sections, and they are recommending approval of our request. As such, I'd like to request approval of the DSI amendment. And at this time, I'd like Ben Mandel from Tricera to come up to speak to the economic impact of this development in this area of the city, as well as some of the branding that'll take place with the shops and the offices at the press.
Thank you, Joni. I appreciate your, your support and, you know, overview of the project. And thank you, all your, all the planning board members for being here tonight. So the economic impact of the press, over the course of a 10-year period, there will be a $10 million positive impact. And the 2019 actual taxes were 509,000, and the anticipated taxes at project completion will be 1.15 million to 1.3 million. The fees paid to the city, estimated total impact fees will be 580,000, total permanent cost 350,000. We're required to spend 120,000 in art and public places. We're going above and beyond that. The job creations, estimated temporary construction jobs created already is 1,000. The approximately, we've hired 30 local subcontractors and have already hired four local design companies. There will be 250 jobs created from the retail and approximately 720 jobs from the office. Before I go further, I just want to state that my business partner, Scott Sherman, and I are extremely grateful to be working with the city of West Palm Beach and the local community. And now I will walk you through the rest of our vision for the project. So as, as Joni stated earlier, we're, so the 120,000 square foot warehouse building that was vacant, non-operational, is being turned into an urban retail run with a grocer anchor of 45,000-plus fitness operator, and then other retail uses and potentially an office tenant on the second floor. We've already successfully demolished 86,000 square feet, which used to be the Penny Saver building that housed the coupon division of the Palm Beach Post, and a bridge that connected the four-story office building to the rest of the project and the 120,000 square foot warehouse. And then we're proposing to build a 2,200 square foot Starbucks Out parcel on the corner of Belvedere and South Dixie. And this just gives you another view of the project. So Tricera is actively collaborating with Florida East Coast Railroad to close the at-grade crossing, to build a pedestrian bridge to safely and efficiently access the rest of the project. We have engaged an international award-winning artist, Yala Ford, to create three very unique art pieces that displays the respect we have for the Post by highlighting the machine that truly started the industry, the linotype. Yala will be reusing actual pieces from a linotype and installing them intertwined with her own way of communicating through shapes. And as you can see in this image, she's taking actual pieces from a linotype machine, and it's going to be on the northeast portion of the four-story office building. The second piece is a flagship metal portrayal of a linotype machine, which will be situated at the main entry point of the four-story office building that provides a one-of-a-kind presence for patrons walking around the property. And then lastly, the third composition will be displayed through an art-focused bus stop, adding curb appeal that invites and entices people to use the active form of transportation. It will be covered, it will have seat dividers, and it will have USB charging stations and Wi-Fi.
Of course.
This is a rendering of the final product with the organic grocer, the signage program, which still needs to be approved by staff, and the single-level parking deck. This is a view of the Starbucks Out parcel, a very basic rendering on the corner of Belvedere and South Dixie. This is a rendering of the four-story offi, office lobby renovation. We're spending over a million dollars to create a very energetic office product that currently doesn't exist in the market. This is another view of the four-story office lobby renovation. And thank you very much for being here and listening to myself and Joni. And I hope you agree with us that this is a great addition to West Palm Beach and the growth of the market, and I hope that you approve it unanimously. Thank you.
Does that conclude your presentation? Before you leave, any questions of the applicant? Let me start this side. No.
Ben, with FDOT doing the Dixie Highway corridor supposedly starting in 2021, it's a three-laning, wide inner sidewalks, trees, bike lanes. It's a much more, much more pedestrian-oriented feel through that whole corridor. It's designed to connect all those rooftops to your project, and it should create good synergies. It should really add value to you guys. It's not going to change my vote on, on for this, but do you believe that the city had at least good intentions in trying to flip-flop the location of the Starbucks as it relates to the parking, to bring the building closer to the corner, to kind of activate that street, especially because you're getting so much more sidewalk and so much more distance from the traffic, that it's less of a concern to bring the building relating to the street? Did you consider this stuff, and just some kind of intellectually satisfying answer that you actually thought through what the city was proposing, because their plans are interesting?
Yes, and 100%, I think that they had very good intentions. And I did work with John Roach and city staff for multiple months through different iterations of the plan. I got Starbucks involved, I got the director of real estate for the East Coast on the phone with John Roach. We worked, you know, very hard and, and long hours to try to make the design function in a way where it could be up along South Dixie and still meet the requirements for Starbucks to be able to move forward. The problem is, is they would not move forward without a drive-through, a bypass lane, and over 22 parking spaces. And there was no way to configure the Out parcel on this small section of our project in a way to do that while maintaining the exposure up along Dixie. Unfortunately, I wish that we could have been able to do it. But I wasn't, at the end, I wasn't willing to lose that deal, which really does, you know, help get the project to where it needs to be.
Yeah, so at the end of the day, it's a tenant-driven.
100%.
Quite a tenant-driven issue.
Tenant-driven requirement.
That makes sense, thank you.
I have no questions.
No questions. Chris, any questions?
Yes. So when you're leasing a project of this nature, which is very unique because we're, you know, adaptive reusing existing structures that were built for a different use. So, you know, the 120,000 square foot warehouse building is a lot deeper than a standard shopping center, retail center. And so, you know, with the effect of e-commerce today, you see a lot of junior anchor and big-box anchor spaces being dark in suburban shopping centers. And the landlords are working to re-lease them to new convenient entertainment and service, you know, focused tenants. And the, the issue that we had is, is those spaces are typically 180 feet deep. We're working with 220 feet of depth. And when you get a anchor tenant, now the word anchor doesn't necessarily mean size. It means that it's going to attract other tenants to the project that want to be there, and Starbucks does that. The, the name, the brand awareness that Starbucks has is a huge catalyst for us to, you know, get the other tenants that are going to be service-oriented tenants for the local community.
And you're saying that's really something that you thought was meaningful to the.
Well, it's a conflict for you, no? Correct. I just have one question that also relates to Starbucks. This had come up in our discussion. I was advised that some of the neighbors have concern about the traffic issue with Starbucks. Do you want to address that? You satisfied it's not going to cause traffic issues?
I, I am satisfied that it's, that it's not going to create more traffic issues than when Palm Beach Post was fully operational. We're not, we're not bringing, I like to use this example, we're not bringing a Costco, we're not bringing an Ikea, we're not bringing uses that would pull from the county and beyond. The uses that we're bringing are really focused to the local community and the, and the traffic that's already existent on the road. So the people that are already, you know, driving to and from work on South Dixie are going to be the, the users and customers of this Starbucks and the other amenities at the site. And so we're not bringing additional traffic that isn't currently on the road today, in my opinion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we hear then from staff? Mr. Roach?
Thank you. Good evening, for the record, John Roach, principal planner for the city. I believe the applicant gave, you know, all the pertinent information with regards to the scope in which they're, they're doing the project, so I'm not going to duplicate that. But I do want to talk about, one is development of significant impact is unique. It's not like a planned development where people or the developers asking for waivers, exceptions, so forth and so on. They're not asking for flexibility from the code. The code provides that a DSI development of significant impact is any project, non-residential, 50,000 square feet or more. It just puts it through an extra level of scrutiny, put it into the public hearing process, requiring Planning Board and City Commission to actually review those projects. Actually, with the exception, or to the exception of planned developments, DSIs cannot request waivers or variances, they are prohibited from doing so. So every element of what the applicant is proposing before you has to meet the provisions of the code when it comes to setbacks, building heights, number of parking spaces, number of trees, everything like that has to comply with the code. We found that it has complied with all the provisions of the code. I will confirm that the applicant worked with staff significantly with regards to placement of the Starbucks building. I didn't make it easy for them by any means. It was a, it was a long battle. Unfortunately, you know, our current code just provides for the simple setbacks of a building, provides for the maximum height, doesn't dictate the placement of the building. We certainly look at context, we look at the corridor, we, you know, look at the efforts that are being made right now with regards to South Dixie Highway, and therefore we were trying to push that. Unfortunately, it didn't pan out. But we do feel like that what they have brought before you complies with all of the elements of the zoning land development regulations, that it complies with the standards as specified in the staff report. Therefore, we are making, recommending approval. However, over the last few days, we have been looking at the traffic issue further. At the time when the staff report went out, we had an idea of what we wanted. However, our engineering department hadn't necessarily developed the conditions fully to the point where I was able to include those in there. So that's what the applicant was referring to at the beginning of their presentation, you know. So there are some additional modifications to the conditions, as well as additional conditions on top of what was provided, so I want to go through those briefly, because a lot of them deal with the traffic aspect, the fact that there will be an increase of traffic from what was previously there when it comes to a traffic study. But we feel like that the conditions are trying to reduce that impact as much as possible, provide for some alternative modes of transportation, and build those into the project as part of the requirements. Some modifications to the conditions, just go through them briefly. First, before they go to the City Commission, there are some modifications to the site plan, landscape plan, and so forth. The first two were in your staff report, the other four are new. One is that there has to be a minimum of five spaces dedicated for carpooling. That has to occur on the east side of the railroad tracks. That's primarily for like the office building and so forth, to try and encourage that motor transportation. They need to increase the sidewalk along Belvedere Road to eight feet, kind of a spin-off of the improvements that are being made on South Dixie Highway. The applicant did talk about closure of the at-grade crossing. We're really trying to improve the safety conditions that exist here. Right now, it's a private at-grade crossing that doesn't meet the safety standards of legitimate railroad crossing, either for vehicles or cars, or pedestrians. So they have agreed and are proposing to close that. We'll put curbing in, landscaping it, so that vehicles can no longer provide for that crossing. And then there will be the addition of the pedestrian bridge that I'll talk about in a second. In addition, they have to provide the equivalent of one parking space for micro-mobility facilities. As you know, the city is moving forward with a micro-mobility plan and hiring a consultant to actually implement a micro-mobility system, you know, consisting of various forms of alternative modes of transit. At the time of which, you know, we implement that program, we will then act upon that space that is set aside and utilize that. So the location, you know, needs to be identified at this point, and then we'll act upon it at the time which the, the program is implemented. So the other ones, scrolling down, these were already in your staff report. Some modific, or some additions is that prior to the CEO of building number two, which is the restaurant office, they need to provide a bus shelter along South Dixie Highway. Again, alternative modes of transit is, is the push here. Part of the issuance is CEO of building number three, which is the retail building, the former warehouse building. They need to build the raised medians within Monso. This is again, improve the safety of the crossing, keep vehicles from going around the gates. 16.2 is the existing private at-grade crossing has to be closed. Install the, the improvements associated with that. And then 17 comes with regards to parking availability. And we're looking for a potential opportunity in which we can partner with the developer to utilize some of the spaces for public parking. That hasn't been determined at this point, but what we have agreed to is that with each business tax receipt, every time a business comes in, is that they will provide a report of the percentage of occupancy that exists within the project. And prior to reaching 50% of occupancy of the office building, the pedestrian bridge needs to be installed. That's kind of at the point in which they rely upon the parking on the west side of the railroad tracks to meet their code requirements. So that's the threshold in which the pedestrian bridge needs to be installed to provide for that safety, you know. If people are going to utilize that parking on the west side of the railroad tracks, we want to make sure that that safe crossing is there. So before 50% occupancy of building number one, that pedestrian bridge needs to be installed. And then, once they reach 80% occupancy for the overall site, within one year of that timeframe, we want to have them do a parking utilization study. We want to find out actually how many parking spaces on their site are they really using, you know, at a, at a somewhat full capacity of the project. And at that time, if it's available and there are additional spaces that are not being utilized, we will talk to the, we will work with that developer to see about utilizing some of it for the public. They're not wanting to make that commitment right now, because obviously they want to find out if they need that parking, but they are committing to the study and then open up those negotiations at that time. And then I, number 18, I talked about at the time which the micro-mobility program is implemented, they will provide for placement of those facilities. The other ones are just renumbering. And then the last two, 21 is with regards to delivery trucks. That was one of the concerns, is making sure that delivery trucks to the site do not use the adjacent residential neighborhoods, either through Georgia Avenue or anything like that. Monso crosses in front of residential homes, so we want to avoid delivery trucks going down that roadway as a shortcut. So we are providing in there a condition that they cannot use Monso Road west of the development site. They can use it in front of there, because there is an existing loading bay into the ware- warehouse that they will utilize, and delivery trucks can come off of Dixie and provide for access to that. But we do not want them going any further west. So, we've put in there the condition that they cannot go west of their site and that they need, they can circulate through their western parking lot if necessary to get back to Dixie Highway. So, they can pull a U-turn within their own property and go back out to Dixie and avoid any impact to the residential development. And then, lastly is, you know, desire there was expressed by our engineering department with regards to how people utilize different forms of transportation on a site like this when you have mixed use of office, retail, and so forth. So, the developers agree that any mobility data that they have or, you know, that they collect over the years will be made available to the city. That will allow us to implement some of our programs more effectively, and they've agreed to do that. So, that concludes all the modifications to the conditions. Staff doesn't have anything further to discuss unless there's specific questions of the board. But again, we worked hard to try and get the best that we could, and we feel like that it complies with the code.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. Any questions, Mr. Roach? Let me start with you, Peter.
Yeah. John, you were talking about preventing truck traffic. Now, are we talking just simply signage that the developer will have to install to indicate that there is no truck traffic going through residential?
It will be provisions that they will need to enforce upon their tenants and the deliveries that occur through their tenants, you know, as part of lease agreements or what have you. We're not going to get into the business of reviewing lease agreements, but they need to make sure that their tenants are complying with the conditions of the development order. You know, if they are in violation of that, then we can take the development order or the developer to, you know, the special magistrate as necessary and, you know, enforce whatever provisions are needed. So, it's not necessarily through signage. It's similar to, you know, designated truck routes or what have you, but this time it's, you know, it's enforced upon a private developer and their private tenants.
My other question was, what exactly is the process? Let's say, a year from now, they have a 10,000-square-foot tenant. What would be the process of approval at that point?
So, at that point, so long as they do not trigger any of the thresholds, it's within, you know, the existing building, it's just interior renovations or what have you, and don't generate any additional impact, then it would be a staff level. Actually, at that point, it would just be a building permit.
That's it.
Correct. As the applicant indicated, they're actually going through a staff level right now for a lot of the work that's being done on the site, the parking deck, the surface parking, the renovations to the warehouse building, all of that is at staff level. The problems that they had were increase in traffic, increase in traffic that comes with converting from warehouse to retail. And then, also, the additional building and the additional square footage created the, or met the threshold for the major amendment and therefore, put it before you. But otherwise, if it's just swapping out tenants, interior renovations, again, so long as it's not additional traffic or additional buildings, it would be a staff level.
Thanks, John.
Andre.
I'm just curious what the micro-mobility program is. What is, can you define that a little bit more?
So, it'd be-
That's true.
It would be, it's a combination of things, and actually, the city's working to find a consultant that would provide multiple forms of it. But, you know, it could be a scooter program. It could be the bike share, you know, the bike racks that had, you know, that you could rent. There's all different forms of, you know, alternative modes, but, you know, things other than the automobile that are, you know, personal transit methods that are being used.
Understood. Thank you.
Mark, any questions?
John, I would assume that Brian Guralnick to the west of this planned Starbucks would be on board and excited about this. Has he been squeaking it all? He's spent a ton of money rebuilding that building.
There hasn't been much discussion with the adjacent property. I haven't heard any concerns expressed from. The only concern was with regards to placement of the public notice sign that accidentally got put on his property. But that was quickly resolved and haven't heard anything since, so.
Thank you.
Scott, any questions?
Yes, thank you. If we could go back to the proposed, the additional conditions, the one regarding the, regarding the, when it reaches 80% capacity, the study that's going to have to be done? How are you deter, when you say 80%, so I understood like in 17.1, for example, I get 50% occupancy of the office building. But this whole project has got a variety of different uses. So, when you say 80% of occupancy for the overall DSI in 17.2, how are you defining occupancy? Is it number of tenants? Is it respect, is it with respect to the total percentage of square footage that's being under leasing?
Square footage, yes.
Okay.
So, when 80% of the, and say, with each business that comes in, the developer, the property owner will have to supply the table saying, you know, with this business, we have X percentage occupied. And they'll continue to update that with each new business that comes in. When they reach that 80% for the overall, that includes the retail building, you know, what they're currently proposing to be the fitness center, the office building, the Starbucks. Once they reach 80%, then they need to provide that parking utilization study within a year's time because we want to recognize that, we want to get the peak season and things like that. So, they have a year to do it, but we wanted to make sure that there was sufficient occupation of the buildings before we start counting number of parking spaces that are being used.
And the other question I had, John, was, you know, with the road diet supposedly to take place in the near future along South Dixie Highway, did you take that into account in looking at the traffic concurrency and the impacts, you know, assuming that that does in fact happen and what that will mean for compliance with the ZLDR standards?
Yeah, so, and the applicant's traffic engineer is here to answer any detailed questions with regards to traffic. But the traffic study that was provided did account for the road diet. And it was included with the traffic concurrency review to the county. It was included as part of the city's transportation, you know, the impact statement or impact review. But also, most importantly, is FDOT was actually a reviewer of the project and the impacts because access to the project is on a state highway. So, FDOT had to provide preliminary approval as far as what was proposed. So, they reviewed that study that was provided, again, that included the road diet, which is actually an FDOT project, so they were aware of it, and acknowledged and approved what was proposed.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions. Scott. Debra. Any questions? Chris. I just have one quick question. The road diet has nothing to do with what we're here for today, correct? I mean, it's not part of-
That is correct. This project, and it's similar to other projects that I've been involved with, the 3111 South Dixie and some other ones, it can function regardless. So, you know, obviously, with the road diet, they'll make modifications within the right of way to accommodate that, the wider sidewalks and so forth. But the plans as drawn right now are actually based upon current conditions. So, if the road diet doesn't move forward, the project still functions.
Understood. All right, thank you. All right, at this point, given, forgive me, at this point, what anyone from the public wish to be heard? We do have one card. Was there anyone else who wished to be heard? And sir, were you here, come forward, sir, give your card. Were you folks here during the swearing-in of speakers? And how about you, sir? Were you here during the swearing-in of speakers? Were you here when we swore in the speakers? Just do this.
Oh, yeah, I was.
Okay, you were. For you, sir, if you raise your right hand, if you already been sworn in, you'd have to do it a second time. But this gentleman, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Please state your name for the record. You may be go first.
Anthony Vento, my name.
And you'll follow him, sir. Go ahead.
I have a home at 600 Monso. And my question is, the truck traffic, you said you were going to stop big trucks from going west, which would go right by my house. You know, like tractor trailers, would they be coming down, up and down Monso, or that would all be illegal?
Sir, you could ask these questions, and we'll give them a chance to answer. But go ahead and put your questions on the record.
Those are my questions.
What concerns you have? That's it? And when they'll have a chance to respond when it's their turn. Thank you.
Those are my questions, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you could come forward.
Good evening. William Feldkamp, 108 Lake Avenue, Lake Worth. Could you put the site plan on the board, please? I own 10 units on Almeria Road, which is quite near the, one of the two exits onto Dixie. And I'm concerned for my tenants that exiting, there are two parking lot exits onto South Dixie. And I was not here, will there be signalization at that one or both of those exits?
Just pose your questions, and they'll have a chance to respond. So, that's one of your questions.
That's one of the questions. And more than that, I worry, I'm concerned about all of that parking lot exiting onto Dixie and some of them making left turns or wanting to make left turns to go north. And some of them wanting to go straight across Almeria Road and maybe going onto Olive Avenue. I worry for Almeria Road and probably also for Dire Road, which has the same issue of people cutting through. Almeria is a very narrow street. It is two-way. It is barely sufficient. There is an elderly housing project there, which often has ambulances out front. I would certainly request that you add a condition to the approval. I'm in favor of the project, certainly. I have no problem with the project. But I would ask that you add a condition to the approval that Almeria Road between Olive and Dixie become one-way westbound to avoid any traffic exiting that parking lot from going through our purely residential street. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to be heard? And if not, we'll invite the applicant back if you want to address the questions that were raised by the public.
Good evening, for the record. Chris Hagan with Kimble Horn Associates. Transportation engineer prepared the traffic impact studies for the project. And I think both of the questions that were asked during public comment are traffic-related. So, just wanted to relay them, and I have been sworn in. First of all, related to the Monso truck traffic, as was discussed during the presentation, that will be, that is a condition of approval for the owner to work with the tenants to include that as a requirement for the tenants for truck delivery. So, this is not uncommon for this project or unique to this project. It's something that is, and I think it's been handled, and John could probably verify this, is I think when similar issues have arisen on other projects in the past, it's been handled in a similar way with a similar condition that could later be addressed if any one was found in violation of that. With respect to the access onto Dixie and Almeria Road and the roadways there, first of all, we did go through, the access is controlled by FDOT. US-1 Dixie Highway is an FDOT roadway. So, as was covered in the presentation, and John showed on the screen the letter that was the outcome of the review process with FDOT. They reviewed the locations of the driveways. We're actually using the exact same three driveways that exist today on Dixie Highway because we're kind of working around existing buildings on site. Those locations that existed to serve those buildings still make the most sense for continuing to serve the buildings today. To the extent that, you know, there will be, you know, traffic, as the traffic enters and exits the property, primarily, it's oriented to Dixie Highway. It's going to be, it's primarily, you know, oriented to that. And the comment about converting Almeria to one-way is a completely separate process. I've been involved in one-way roadway conversions in the city of West Palm Beach. There's a whole application process that has to, you have to go through. All the stakeholders, all the property owners on the road would have to approve of that. But really, that would need to be undertaken separately by the owners, the property owners and stakeholders on that road.
I had another question.
Are there any other questions? Sure.
If this is approved, we are not increasing the allowable number of traffic trips that exist today, correct?
There is an increase, but that was reviewed by both the city and by Palm Beach County. And it was approved, the traffic impacts were approved by the county and the city through this process. And we reviewed and evaluated the intersections and the road capacity there. The one thing, as Ben mentioned in his response when a similar question was asked earlier, was that in some ways, although there is an increase in trips going in and out of the driveways, in some ways, there's a lessened impact on the overall road network because when the post was in full operation there, it was all office, and you had trip lengths of people driving on average probably six to seven miles because that's the average commute length for office users in Palm Beach County. Now, there is still an office component, but much smaller. And the remainder of the site with the Starbucks, with the grocer, with the fitness center, are trips that are going to be at most typically about a mile in length because they're pulling from the immediate neighborhood. And a lot of these, even though we had to treat them as new trips in our study, are people that are already going to fitness center somewhere today. They're neighbors and residents in this area who are already going to a grocery store today. And instead, we call it in traffic engineering terms, more diverted trips where they're going to the site instead of making the same trip that they were somewhere else.
Understood. Any questions of the applicant? Scott, thank you, sir. At this point, we're bringing them back to the board for discussion. Is there anyone that has concerns about this project going forward? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions the planning board case number 1086C.
And that's conditions as amended by revised-
Yes, revised.
Thank you.
All revised conditions stated by John.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we then move to Planning Board Case 1852, a city-initiated amendment to the utilities element, right, of the comprehensive plan. How fast and-
Good evening, for the record. Alex Hansen, city comprehensive planner. Yes, this is a city-initiated request for a proposed amendment to the utilities element of the comprehensive plan to update the 10-year water supply facility work plans of element and other sections of the utilities element. This is based on a requirement by, of section 163, 3177 of the Florida statutes. So, background, so, chapter 163 of the statutes, Florida statutes, requires the city to revise the 10-year water supply work plan or work plan within the comprehensive plan nor later than 18 months after the Water Management District approves a regional water supply plan or its update. The South Florida Water Management District adopted its most recent update to the water, to the Lower East Coast Water Supply Plan in November of 2018. Therefore, the city is required to update the work plan nor later than May of 2020, which is what we're doing right now. There are several reasons why the statutes require local governments to update the 10-year water supply facilities work plan. One is to ensure adequate water supply for current and future residents, also to strengthen the position to compete for funding assistance for water-related projects, to plan for alternative sources that may take time or to develop and finance, and also to ensure that the local needs are considered by the regional water suppliers and by the South Florida Water Management District in their planning process. As far as the proposed amendment, in summary, the proposed revisions to the work plan include changes to the population estimates and projections, which are being updated to reflect the most recent available data. We also include in a new objective 1.3 in the solid waste sub-element of the utilities element. This is new language that is related to the transportation and pretreatment of fats, oils, and grease, fog from restaurants and food service establishments. This is based on state regulations. Also, the proposed revision, revisions are changing some of the water demand estimates and projection. This is for consistency with the 2018 South Florida Water Management District LEC plan update. There's also some technical specifications for the eastern well field, which are being updated. In addition, also, some of the dates are being modified. Some of the capital improvement needs are being revised to meet existing and future demands. There's also some revisions to the section dealing with water conservation efforts. These are some updates to reflect some of the alternative water supply projects and reuse section of the plan. There's a lot of changes to the timeframe to reflect the requirement that the water supply plan needs to be a 10-year water supply plan. So, since we're updating now in 2020, this is going to be for the timeframe between 2020 and 2030. And finally, we are amending the section of the work plan dealing with the water treatment plan process to better reflect some of the current practices right there at the water treatment plan. In conclusion, the proposed amendment complies with the requirements of chapter 1- In conclusion, the proposed amendment complies with the requirements of Chapter one sixty-three of the statutes and with other appropriate state requirements, and is also consistent with other elements of the city's comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of this case. I'll be happy to answer any question, and we also have staff from our utilities department in case you have some questions to the specific technical aspects of the proposed amendments.
Are we in pretty good shape on the water, Alex? That's the question. Next ten years. All right, any questions of staff? Let me start on this side. Chris? Deborah? And?
I have a question. I looked at the storm water management subelements, and I noticed that you're looking at a three-year and one-hour storm and a twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm. I mean, I don't remember the last time we had any one of those, and I don't see anything...
Last year, but never mind.
I don't see anything here but the hundred-year and some of the bigger storms that were now, that are now occurring in Florida.
Can you refer to a specific page that you're looking at?
Goal one, page eight UE, Policy One 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 A.
Just to be clear, this is a section that is not being revised as part of this amendment.
No, no, I'm just asking, you know, like, we have current issues that perhaps were not around ten years ago when this plan was originally drafted. For example, sea level rise. Now, is that, is that an issue that we should be addressing in these goals? And what about, you know, the reality that we don't have twenty-five-year storms anymore? They're much bigger.
Rick Green, Development Services Director. Mr. Pifkal mentioned that we do have a sustainability department, so they're working on measures that we are incorporating, not only in our comprehensive plan, but other elements of our work tasks in the city. Several years ago, we did adopt a freeboard ordinance, so one of the requirements of that freeboard ordinance, and we did it in two phases. So we talked about that with our development community over a period of an entire year before we adopted the first freeboard ordinance, and what that said was that if you are within a flood zone, you have to raise your finished floor elevation six inches. We came back approximately a year later and raised it another eighteen inches, so now we're at two feet. We do a lot of work with FEMA. We are currently contesting some of the FEMA findings in terms of where that flood plain is. They were using older data. There was some LiDAR information that was taken, and there's a handful of areas that we are contesting right now, not only us, but Palm Beach County and other cities in the Palm Beach County area. So those are going to hearing, and then the hope is that some of the areas that have been designated as flood zone areas, we're trying to get removed because we don't think with the more recent data that we've been using as a staff, rise to the level of an issue, but certainly there's a myriad of different things we're doing, but the freeboard from the standpoint of Development Services was one issue that we brought forward over the last three or four years.
No, thanks, Rick, but I think I was referring specifically to storm water management, you know, and drinking water.
Yeah, I was also just indicated to me by some of the water utility staff, there's a storm water master plan that a city consultant is currently working on. The expectation is for the study to be completed in the very near future. Some of the conclusions of that may or may not make it into the comp plan, but again, that is the document that the city is going to use in order to move forward with regards to storm water issues.
Okay.
And I'll also add, because we have been working through the adoption of the storm water master plan and adopting the county plan, which we took to the city commission, I want to say within the last four weeks, that also makes us eligible for FEMA reimbursements, and there's a tremendous amount of money out there right now, so a lot of the capital projects that we are going to be funding over the next few years are actually going to be FEMA funds that are going to be reimbursed to the city, so we're incorporating that.
Great. Other questions? Andre.
No questions.
Mark?
Yeah, Alex, so, you know, we often sell in this West Palm world that our surface aquifer is a competitive advantage because it doesn't have the same saltwater intrusion problems that our neighbors to the south have. Is that, in your mind, still an advantage, and is that kind of unique nature of our surface aquifer included in our comp plan as a positive, as a differentiator, as something that's special about West Palm Beach? Is my science wrong?
I'll let the utility staff handle that one.
All right. Sir, if you don't mind, state your name for the record.
Sure will. Good afternoon. I'm Darryl Graziani, I'm the water plant manager, and we're not on aquifer, we're on surface water. Okay, all right, let's clarify for that. And in there, you know, we bring water from all the way out west, all the way into downtown, and we keep the aquifer recharged, and that's my position to argue with the Water Management District every day, and we should be getting some sort of perk from them on that, and that's, that's why we're not getting that saltwater intrusion. That's why sometimes I believe the county has water because they're taking it. So it is a competitive advantage, isn't it? Yeah, it is. One of the things I will say, Pat Painter, who is my, our Water Resources Manager for the last few years, basically our system has been rain-driven, very little water coming from Lake Okeechobee because of the quality out there. Okay?
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions of staff? And if not, does anyone...
I do have one question.
Go ahead, Scott.
I was just wondering, what was sort of, what was the basis for the, like, the wholesale change in Section four point one, looking at page twenty-six UE through twenty, through the end, through thirty UE? I mean, you basically took out the entire existing water treatment plan process section and replaced it, and I was just wondering what the thinking was there?
All right, Darryl Graziani, yeah. Yeah, we've changed a lot in the last twenty years, in the last ten, a lot of things have changed, and it needs to reflect what's there. What was written here seems like it may have been written twenty years ago?
Yeah.
The original, so it's time to update it. You know, we have a new UV plant, and that gives us an additional barrier, which has been running really well. We have a new PAC basin, which is pulverized powdered activated carbon, sorry, and that should improve our taste and odor and all this stuff that's going on, and projects that, when I read it, talked about doing, that are done, and I think we needed to bring that in, that that's where we're at, and now we're moving forward to look for other alternatives. Does that make sense?
Sure. Don't go away. Don't go away. I had another question regarding the Route Seven extension and Roderick Road, and what would the impact be on the city's water supply?
Is that one mine or yours, Derek? Our biggest concern is that is our drinking water supply. There's ordinances here on wellfield protection about things you're not allowed to do around a wellfield, can't put petroleum tankers, you know, a storage tank there, and yet on our water supply, the city or the state and the county want to run a road through it. That's runoff, we run the risk of basically introducing more contaminants into our system that may require alternative treatments that we don't have right now. So our system is pretty basic. It's a softening, lime softening plant with conventional filtration. We go through the UV process now, which really makes this nice, and then standard disinfectant residual, which is chloramines, which is a mixture of sodium hypochlorite or bleach and ammonia, so that way it doesn't taste too much like pool ble, pool water all year long.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Does anyone have any concerns they wish to discuss? And if not, I'm looking for a motion.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman, of Planning Board Case Eighteen Fifty-Two.
Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. That brings us then to code revision cases, at which we have none, other business, unfinished business, new business.
Business, business.
If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.